I'll have to order the regular meeting in the Sclimary School Board of Education at 6:30. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance is the reply of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for our all. Trust me, Bob is not here tonight. She is traveling. This is the portion of the meeting where a member of the public may address the board briefly for up to three minutes or request to be scheduled on the agenda of a future meeting by filling out the how to address the Board of Education form that is on the back table. Please note, Board of Education members will not respond directly to public comment. Is there anyone who would choose to have public comment tonight? Okay, Superintendent Gray.
Just a quick announcement, next week, not this weekend, but the following weekend is Grease, the high school drama club we're presenting at, so it'll show us Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Saturday night, we will have a, or they will be having a kind of a 50's diner dinner theater, so it's an opportunity through the culinary arts program, they have a meal before, but it's a huge, 16 student chance, so hopefully you get a chance to come on out. Next Friday, you can do kind of the double dip of a, the start of a JV or freshman basketball game, and then get down to Grease too, play playing year next Friday, so it'll be a good time for all. And then ultimately, I just want to remind folks that March 27th is the classroom to boardroom event, we're making sure we're gonna have a nice turnout for that. Chambers been invited, and so board members, if you're interested, RSVP to Jody Golinski, but that would be a great event to kind of highlight a lot of the programs going on at high school. And I would also then like to thank the folks who were at the 9th Street open house last night, and the Southwest Washnok Consortium open house was a nice, strong attendance, so already kind of gearing up for 2015, 16. That's all I have.
Board of Education members.
I attended the foundation event along with trustee Heft, and had the urging of my bride, I won the auction for the grand hotel, so I know where I'll be spending my 33rd wedding anniversary. So, all is good on the home front.
Karen, anything at the high school going on?
It's pretty, it's pretty good, but it's also pretty busy. Finals are coming up, you know, Grease is coming, NHS is doing a blood drive, you know, there's a lot of things center on Valentine's Day, so it's pretty busy, but still pretty good.
Can I have a motion to approve the agenda as printed?
So who?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Scheduled reports, the Weber Bliss one-room schoolhouse presentation.
I'll turn it over, starting with Assistant Superintendent Lott, and we'll introduce our guest.
Okay, sounds good. Well, a little background on Weber Bliss, you know, it's one of these, it's something we have in the district that we often overlook at how great it is, because every so often, well, I'll have a guest in the district coming through from another district, and they'll, they'll make a comment about how great that would be for their district to have that. It's just a terrific resource, and I think we need to make sure we're circling back to see how lucky we are about having that. And really, two people that really make it go are Jim and Cheryl Huff, and they do everything for it. I think people don't realize, we don't have a crew that's doing all this work, they figure out ways to keep it painted, hire that staff, keep that upkeep, all those things that go into Weber Bliss which are really significant. So even though Cheryl's, you know, foundation president and all sorts of other things, she really helps drive all of this. And so for our students, she's helped develop curriculum around it, so it's Jim, they've just been such a great resource for it. So tonight, Jim's here to lend support, but Cheryl's gonna largely do a lot of the presenting about what we do at Weber Bliss, I'm gonna do a little as well. And so she's gonna start with talking about the history behind it, and then we'll go through and talk about how it's used, and talk about how the second, third, and fourth grade students use it, and what curriculum is involved.
That actually is a bell from the one-room school that my mother attended, Wood School out on Dell Road, and so we start the school day with that bell, or the bell on the top of the row. But with that, it is a living history museum. We depict the era of the late 1800s to early 1900s when we are there. We have approximately 1,800 students and visitors that visit on an annual basis, and this, if you go back one picture, is a picture that each of the students who come from our district receive for their visit as a memento of that. And you can see that when we say living history, we're attempting to have them dress the role, eat the lunches that these students would have eaten in the 1800s, early 1900s, and we have a closet in each building so that they can come up with the costumes, although a lot of the students do, the teachers also, and I think that's a fabulous way for our students to step back into that particular era. With that, the structure was moved in June 2001 to the current location on Woodland Drive. Ellen Ewing and the Board of Education back in 2001 gave a Seaacre site. It was the last remaining one-room school that was intact. Celine's school district had approximately 44 buildings that were closed down in approximately 1955. Jim's mother and father went to the meeting, because he attended a one-room school, as I did, and they went to the consolidation meeting, and I can actually give you names of people that were there that night, who were basically saying you needed to consolidate for a lot of reasons. So they came home and said, "Next year, you're going into Celine." And that began the concept of how I depict myself and Jim too. We were the country kids, the others were the city kids, and Union and Jensen were the first two buildings that we came into in 1955. I attended Rentschler on the corner of Bethel Church and Alba Road for three years, kindergarten first and second, and then third grade, boarded that big yellow bus and came into town for the first consolidation of what we know today as Celine area schools. Celine Area Schools Historic Preservation Foundation was founded in that same year as a 501(c)(3) to operate financially and to restore and maintain the building. And we have three buildings on site, although the school itself is the main one. When we moved it, we took a look at other buildings throughout the area, and we wanted it functioning, so we put it on a basement. We have a furnace, you know, we have the amenities of today, but when you walk into the classroom, you will see what it was in the late 1800s, early 1900s. It took $150,000 to restore it and update it, and meet it to school building standards. I mentioned the basement, heat and air conditioning, and yes, we do have air conditioning there that we can do, it's Wi-Fi compatible, and I'll come back to that in a second. Celine Area Schools Historic Preservation Foundation fundraises today through the craft show Crafter Cafe, the Ice Cream Social, and donations, and that's basically what we survive on throughout this time. Simultaneously, we got staffed together and with our committee, developed the curriculum for third and fourth grade visits, and that met the state guidelines for social studies. One of my comments was, we wanted the curriculums different for third and fourth grade, and yet we wanted it to depict that living history museum concept. In 2008, we added second grade visits and the curriculum according to that, and again, staff was intricately involved in that process.
So we talked about Weber Bliss and how it's used in the community today, and Cheryl touched on that a little bit, but it is largely used for our classroom visits where all the second, third, and fourth grade students come and visit for a portion of a day, and that, it's fall and spring mixed, so it depends on the grade level, and some teachers want to be in the fall, and some want to be in the spring. The other ways we use it are the Ice Cream Social, like Cheryl spoke about, and we're gonna show one of the pictures involved in that, holiday pageant, Fall Festival, and then the other thing is taking in, people will pay a stipend from outside or pay a small fee to use it for birthday parties, weddings, shower. When's the last time we've had a wedding there?
Couple of years.
Because that's a unique look at it. We recently hosted a social studies conference with a lot of people coming through Celine Middle School the other year, and they all came to Weber Bliss and thought it was great because it was a history conference that we had. So to have that on site was really something special for everybody involved with that. So these are some of the uses today, and then we're gonna get into more specifics. So if you look at our next slide here, so Ice Cream Social, we will do all sorts of games and have a good time. This in particular is a watermelon seed spitting competition. I'm trying to think, was this a David Raft win on this one? I can't really remember this.
I don't know.
But that was, that was great fun, and so that kind of kicks off the school year, and we've had great success with this, with showing what types of games students played back then, and then old-fashioned cars, animals are brought in, we've done everything under the sun at this event, which has always been fun. And another event that Cheryl's gonna talk about is the Fall Festival.
One of our purposes is to educate the community and others about the school, and so we had a Fall Festival in 2014 to educate them. One of the things that we quickly learned is that in the one-room schools, the families would celebrate things like fall harvest, spring planting, of course, Christmas, the holiday season, and the end of the school year. So the Fall Festival fit right into that, and we used middle school pumpkins to line the paths, and Becky Greedrisco has done a fantastic job with reenactments, and those are the students that are entering the building for that on that day, and she, we utilize them a lot when we have formal types programs.
And then we get into the classroom visits, in particular, second grade, and Cheryl's brought some of the, this quilt, which she can talk about in just a little bit, and what we've done with that. Second grade curriculum focused on, well, what is a one-room schoolhouse, and how does it relate back to, you know, what they're doing in school now versus what happened back then? And one of the things that I think is interesting and neat as to what we did to get students ready for those visits is had some voiceover YouTube lessons where they would learn a little bit more about the history in Celine. So we're gonna click on one, this is called Letters From Our Past, and maybe you can guess the voice, although it's not real loud.
...that the salt springs south of the Old Sock Trail attracted many Native American tribes and French fur traders. The area was named Celine by the French because the French word means salty waters. Orange originally came to this area as a part of his work for the government. He was commissioned to survey the Sock Trail. He found the trail to be a very narrow path, just wide enough for a single person to travel. Later, the trail was made wider by a caravan of 12 wagons and 30 men. This led to the renaming of this thoroughfare to Chicago Road.
Anyway, we're not gonna go through the whole thing, but we think it's important that students understand some of the background with Celine, and so there's a number of those YouTube lessons that have been created by teachers and staff. Who was that, do you remember?
Sherry Van Ader.
Sherry Van Ader, the voiceover there. So that's been a nice addition. And then when we talk about the curriculum, McGuffey Reader, don't we?
They're on the tables.
Okay, so everybody has them, so that was a big component with reading instruction, and it was the book used for all of that. Arithmetic lesson, which is always fun, because it's specifically, you know, chalkboard-based, and, you know, kids don't use that anymore. So they like getting involved in that, a big focus on penmanship, the indoor and outdoor games, and this, and they've done a great job of figuring out, you know, we're not always having good weather when the kids are there, so figuring out how to use the space inside the one-room schoolhouse, even on bad weather days, to figure out, how are we gonna do games? And they're masters at figuring this out, because it's a pretty, you know, it's a small space, but these two somehow figure out how to get all the kids and all the volunteers that help, and it's really fun to watch. And then a culminating project for second grade is the quilt project. Maybe I'll hold it up. Cheryl, you wanna talk a little bit about it?
The second graders are asked before they come to represent a building in Celine that's old. Now, you have to remember, a second grader may think McDonald's is old. So, as a result, they draw those while they're there then, and through quilting seasons out on Michigan Ave, and volunteers, we put these together for each classroom, so each classroom has their own quilt that they have as a result of their visit. The staff at this point is deciding what to do with them, whether they raffle them off within the classroom or whatever. But this is the, one of the original ones back in 2008, and I just have increasingly seen an improvement in the students' artwork, plus the fact of how we're putting them together at this point. So this is the culminating second grade project that is done.
Okay, and now we'll move into the third grade visits.
Third grade visits are a different curriculum, and the focus on the third grade is a typical school day in the early 1900s. A schoolmaster, one of us, depicts the history of Weber Bliss and goes through many of the factors that I've talked about this evening. We also do a compare and contrast of the one-room school versus their current classroom, and the outhouse is extremely inquisitive to them, from the dunce chair and the dunce cap, and all of those things that we hear about from the olden days. McGuffey Reader is used largely, and Karen, if you'll turn to page 30.
Do I need to turn to my side?
Okay, that's okay. This is one of the lessons that we use, because we know that McGuffey, and I won't have you read the whole thing, Karen, but we know that McGuffey, moral lessons were very important, and one of the things in his writing is that every story had a moral, and we talk about those morals, and those go back to the value of education, patriotism, all the things that as our ancestors came into this country, began to develop with their children. So Karen, just read a couple of lines.
From the top?
Work.
Pardon me?
Is it work?
It's, they're like numbered.
Yeah.
Susie Sunbeam.
Yeah.
Susie Sunbeam was not her real name, that was Susan Brown, but everyone called her Susie Sunbeam because she had such a sweet, smiling face and always brought brightness with her when she came. Her grandfather first gave her this name, and it seemed to fit the little girl so nicely that soon it took the place of her own.
That's right. There's a moral someplace as the story develops and doing it. Another one that I remember that's in there is called work, and it talks about you work before you play. One of the things that Jim and I laugh about is, and this happens to us because I'll come to school and I have one outfit on, but I've been trained to go home and always change clothes, and you have an at-home outfit, and that while you're working, you work in old clothes, or you work in different clothes. And so we, as we read a lot of those, the comparison is very important. Memorization and recitation is another thing. We have a recitation bench in the building that children would have been called up to to recite at. One of the poems that we utilize is 30 Days Half September. I learns 30 Days Half September, and we ask them to memorize it, and students become familiar with that. Elocution also falls into that, and elocution is tongue twisters. Pronouncing words correctly was very important. I know my dad taught me how much wood could a woodchuck chuck if a woodchuck couldn't chuck wood, and we have several of those that we utilize to let the children have fun with it, plus the fact that they learn to pronounce words correctly. Discipline is always fun. Dunce cap, we have an actual dunce chair from a one-room school in Bridgewater Township, and the hickory stick, which is used, and which none of those things could be utilized today for, for you students, to the fact that those things are against the law now, but we do talk about them, and they are present in the building.
Okay, and we move on to the fourth grade curriculum.
And fourth grade is focused more back on the community, how the school played a role in the community. It's a completely different lesson, the second and third grade, because we want the students to go and to realize that there are different lessons to be learned, and we don't want them to think of the same old thing, just another visit to Weber Bliss. So in this one, they have stations, and one of the stations is a journal where they read about a visit by Orange Rizden, by a child in that era, and then they are to predict what schools are going to be like in 100 years. So in 2115, what is school going to be? And that allows them to imagine and take it to a different level. We do a lot with then and now, and I think if you looked at the previous picture, you saw a new car, and the then and now is a present picture and an old picture, and they have to hear them, and then they talk about. One of the ones that I think is unique is US 12 is depicted, and then it's also US 12 back when it was just a ruddy dirt road between Detroit and Clinton that our ancestors traveled on. There's a classroom play that depicts family daily activities, from rounding up the pigs that got out, to churning butter, to ironing your clothes with a flat iron, not even electric, and the props in that are the real educational aspect. And then you have in front of you Diane's Sears catalog. We compare it to a laptop, Scott's using his iPhone rather than a laptop. We use a laptop at the one-room school. So Diane, on page 401, what do you have?
Diamond rings, genuine, solid 14-karat gold mountings.
And how much is it?
Well, let's see, one and a half karat would be $111. A, what is it, four diamonds, one ambroda ruby or a sapphire would be $5.95.
And Mr. Graydon?
I found a couple. The gold one is 3/4 karat with gold on it for $1,049.99. On sale regularly $2,999.
And that's an arithmetic lesson, so that they're using in fourth grade addition and subtraction, and comparing the two. Mr. Heft, I ask you to look up something that we don't have in that 1897 Sears catalog that you could buy if you were in that era, and what'd you find?
Yeah, you were talking about butter churns. You can pick yourself up a nice churn, brass hoops on it, a six gallon for $1.59.
That's very good.
See if you can find one of those.
So the Sears catalog from 1896, and then comparison with the laptop, is an excellent resource for the students, and something that they don't often get an opportunity to compare. And the teachers have those back in the buildings, and they use those extensively with it. That's the conclusion of our presentation, but if the flag's up, or you see cars there, stop. As spring comes into being, late I of April, all of May, early June, we're there with classes, and please do stop in and see us and see what's going on. We love visitors and introduce them. I can remember one day Mr. Raft came, when he was still at the elementary level, and I, you know, I asked him if he rode his horse in, and, you know, he came as the county commissioner, because county commissioners did come and visit the teachers and find out what was happening. So we just had him depict that, and we invite you to be a part of it. We're very proud of it. Jim has more of a passion than I do, even though we both attended one-room schools, but in the same respect, it's a great opportunity for our students. They no longer have to go to Greenfield Village, it's right in our backyard.
And the schedule is a Google Doc where the teachers sign up, so I can just send that to the trustees, so you can pop in on a class and check it out, because it is really fun, and it's a good experience for everybody to check out. With that said, are there any questions for Cheryl or Jim, or myself? Thank you.
I do. 30 days half September, April, June, and November, all the rest have 31 except for February, and fine.
And it goes something about, except for leap year, it has, February is 28 and leap year is 29, but in the old version, there's a whole lot more words.
There's something about "and fine" in there, and I keep needing to look it up.
No?
Okay, I guess I'll have to do it.
Yes.
Get on my computer.
Most of the students can get the first two lines, but the details of the "and" are that, but I know it's 28 and leap year 29. Other questions?
Just a comment, thanks for all you do.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next time you do the report, maybe we won't have a meeting at the school.
You're welcome to. We have.
We've done that.
Yes.
Scottish, can you bring the catalogs or something back?
Can I have a recommended motion to approve the recommendation to vote for Heidi Ponnis to run for the MASP Board of Directors from Region 7?
So moved.
Holden.
Second.
Heidi's not here tonight, she's traveling, but she is running for District 7, Michigan Associate School Board, Board of Directors.
Do we, you know how we vote? I don't remember.
So literally typically, we were set to vote tonight, so their nominations occur. We have not received anything from anyone who would be running against her, but they sent to Region 7. Region 7 closely aligned with Region 8 for the MASA group, so we've kind of got a cohort, and I've sent some information to them about Heidi. And then it also includes Eaton County, which is a little bit different, I know. She sent this information out, so that the boards that are gonna be voting here in the next month know a little bit about it.
Well, we appreciate Heidi's effort to join that board, since that is our pipeline a little bit to Lansing and other places.
Any other discussion?
No, I just think that it's good that Heidi stepped up for this. You know, whenever we can expand our reach and our influence, that can only benefit the district.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nays? Hearing none, the motion passes. I have a recommended motion to approve the 2015-2016 school of choice recommendation that's submitted by Superintendent Graydon.
To move.
What do you kind of just, so essentially, if you look at the memos, it says we have a total of 102 slots available, and that 102 slots references back the policy calling for no more than 10% of our students' population to be non-resident. So of those 102 slots, we're recommending that we look to fill a minimum of 63 slots, and the breakdown is on the following page as it relates. The breakdown in terms of the numbers of minimum students at various grade levels is the same as it was in 2013, 2014, so, pardon me, 2014, 2015, so it's the same as it was for this year. If you recall, we did get more than 50 applications for kindergarten, we did not convert a full 50, so just under that. And again, this kind of presents us with a capacity to try and balance our classes out. There, you know, I was talking a little bit, we have indicated a minimum of one at first grade. Because kindergarten is small, ideally, we get to where we're not adjusting sections from year to year, so we may want to look at first grade if we do have a fair number of students apply, based on where things are at kindergarten-wise, that may be another area of focus for us. But again, we're kind of in that 60-student range in terms of slots we're interested in filling, and it can't hold us consistent with where we've been.
So last year, how many did we totally have apply for school of choice?
We had in excess of 150 apply, because ultimately, well, numerous families apply and have students who are obviously older. I believe our final conversion was in the below 60 students total.
Yeah, 38.
Yeah, 38. So, yeah, we will have, again, in the environment of kind of, you know, school shopping, we'll be a fair number of people who will apply multiple places, and then based on a variety of factors, determine where we'll end up. So we do have, we have several families each year that have been school of choice that move into the district, we've seen a fair amount of that. As the housing market has improved across the county, that's seemed to have spiked, where families have identified Celine as their, kind of their home community, and as they've been able to essentially sell their own house, they've moved in frequently, so we're actually, our school of choice numbers are adjusting, not because they're leaving the district, but because they're converting from school of choice to red students.
I mean, that was ultimately the goal, right, besides providing a quality education opportunity to other students? Any other? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Discussion items, the first one is the infrastructure planning update.
Yeah, I just wanted to touch base with the full board. We have three members of it, Paul Heinecke, Dave Holden, and Heidi Ponnis will be joining Janice Warner, Rex Claire, and myself tomorrow to talk with three different firms related to pre-bond services. We have a needs assessment that we need to do in order to kind of really kind of understand the full envelope of our infrastructure needs. the full envelope of our infrastructure needs. And in doing so, we had talked about this at a kind of at our retreat, we've identified three firms that we want to talk to. Two are architects. One is Stan Tech, formerly SHW, who's been involved with projects here, with some of their key players were involved in the Mylan project. And then King Scott. King Scott's a firm that's done a lot of work, particularly in this area in Chelsea. They're out of the Kalamazoo area. And the third one is Plant Moran Cressa. Plant Moran Cressa, Paul Wills came and spoke to us about what they do and how we might want to look at from a timeline standpoint. And they're really what's considered an owner's representative. They do pre-bond, needs assessment work. They help with kind of coordinating efforts leading up to an election. But then their role after the election would be, if you wanted to, would be to represent us in negotiations, particularly with construction managers, architects, and other entities. So it kind of gives us a little bit of a juxtaposition between an architect-engineering firm and an owner's representative. Again, with the idea, we really focused on that pre-bond environment in terms of what are the types of resources they can bring to make sure we get an understanding of what our needs are, what process will they use for that. So we've set up half-hour interviews with about 15 minutes in between for Q and A, and we hope to be able to identify some. We're doing it timeline-wise. We're on a short timeline. If we are to go qualify through the school bond loan fund, we would need to get a date with Treasury in May, and so our window's fairly tight, so we're trying to do an expedited process, and that's why we've already done some pre-vetting and bringing three quality firms together.
Also, just maybe to extend on that a little bit, in terms of some of our outreach to explain why we need a bond proposal and what's coming, I have speaking engagements lined up with the Heritage PTO on the 17th week from tonight, also the High School PTO on March 11, and the Celine Seniors on March 18. So we'll be getting out there, getting in front of these groups, explaining the need, and do that now because obviously, once we get after Labor Day, you know, then we kind of shift the campaign mode. Right now, we just want to educate, inform, and start to gather that support as we move towards November.
I think our study session in March.
Our research in March kind of in focus on there with a little bit of a high school focus as well. They're going to, I know they want to talk a little bit about their response intervention group that's seen a lot of good things at the high school. Then we're all going to talk about the kind of the environment there. We're going to have a tour prior to that meeting to see the Alcove area and some of the 21st century learning spaces. We did a presentation with Strive the other day related to some things. We may want to bring Strive in the first meeting in March and listen to what they have to say related to a technology survey they put out, and I believe they had over 700 students fill out the technology survey. Just to give some feedback between our students and thinking related to technology and the spaces that we have.
Just so everyone knows, we are taking the Board of Education meetings on the road for two different buildings in each semester. So the March 24 meeting will be at the high school. We need to have a building report and do other things. So, and I think the May one is Pleasant Ridge. So we'll do two this semester, then we'll do two bar on the ball and continue as we hit every building in a year and a half cycle. Any other?
In terms of infrastructure, I mean, you were just getting started, so you're going to probably end up hearing more about infrastructure than you ever wanted to. There's a lot of, a lot of work, a lot of detail that I think the board is going to be interested in seeing about our district. This is a real key time for us to really effectively plan, not only for a bond issue, but also what does our capital planning needs, what do they look like over about a 10-year period? So I'm excited to kind of give, I mean, that's an area that the board has identified over the last several years as a, as an area we need to focus on, so I'm excited to be ready to go.
Okay.
I was just going to say, I hope that we are able to get the community and staff excited about this as well.
I agree.
It'll be real important.
Thank you. Swap agreements. Assistant Superintendent Warner?
So in your packet was the swap management plan. This is a plan that is required on an annual basis now for the revised Municipal Finance Act. So all municipalities that enter into interest rate swaps or hedges have to have this plan. Echo Financial is, in consultation with Stotter Barch, developed the plan, and then it was reviewed by both Stotter Barch and Trune Law Firm. So it's been approved by both of them. And it outlines the appropriate use and procurement of derivative products with the state regulations. It provides guidelines for the structuring and terms to be included in transactions, and it provides requirements of the new federal regulations that need to be met, such as Dodd-Frank. It provides a general risk analysis of the interest rate swap agreements, and provides a summary of our current swap positions and a detailed analysis of the school's current swap risk profile. And it will be reviewed annually. Our swap has not changed, our swap position has not changed since 2012. And this is for our original 2002 debt fund, which we refunded in 2012. And so they were variable rate bonds, and we have a swap agreement that kind of provides a fixed rate on the bonds, so it kind of hedges our cash flow on those.
Will we save money by doing that?
Yes.
Okay.
So in English, this is.
Deep in the weeds.
Deep in the weeds, but basically, we like exchanged our original bond rates for a better deal.
We have variable rates, and on the market, we basically kind of trade for a fixed rate so that we don't have fluctuations in the rates that we're.
Better planning tool.
Yeah, it's kind of, yeah.
Which is a smart move because as, you know, as the economy continues to chug along, you know, gain momentum, at some point, interest rates are going to go up.
Right.
And that, so I applaud you for, you know, vetting this out and helping the district.
Well, Stotter Barch does the wealth of the work, so this is, this is their wheelhouse. And so we depend on them greatly, and then Echo Financial is the one that kind of keeps it in check as things go through.
So right now, you said we're still just set with our 2012 swap?
Yes, yeah, nothing's changed since 2012.
Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items, A, B, C, and D?
So moved.
Freeze. Second.
Second. Vice President Holden. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Hearing none, motion passes. Items scheduled on the next agenda.
It's a workshop meeting. Steve Lot should be presenting relative to kind of the Celine Area School Assessment regimen and some of the curriculum initiatives that we have going on. So we're going to do a little bit of a deep dive into the curricular end of things, talk about assessments, talk a little bit about how we're aligning to the Common Core, and then ultimately, too, we're going to want to hear about the ACT to SAT. Should be riveting.
Steve always brings us riveting items.
That's right.
Is there?
It's a delivery.
Just note, on the following agenda, Naomi Norman was scheduled to come and talk about the National Clearinghouse data, which is kind of, the National Clearinghouse tracks our student, tracks college students and can identify what high school they come from. So there's, if you recall, a few years ago, she came and presented about how our students are doing and some of the trends they see. She will be here in March, she'll be here March 10 and be able to share the information. So I'm excited about that. So I think you're pumped up.
Good. Do you have a policy committee report?
We think we're going to meet in the early March, so.
Okay. Budget potentially.
We will meet, let's see, Monday, the 23rd, 5:00.
This is the second chance for a member of the public to address the board. Do you have anyone who'd like to?
My name is Sean, and I'm a high school student at Celine High School. And I'm taking a biology class right now, and we're at the unit where they learn, we learn about the theory of evolution. And I was wondering why we should be required to learn the theory of evolution because not all of us believe that it is true. So I think that it should be moved to an elective class, and that it could be easily replaced with some other aspect of biology because it's a pretty big science. And, yeah, that's.
Thank you, Sean. So our next meeting will be here at Liberty School, February 24 at 6:30 PM. I have a motion to adjourn the meeting of February 10.
So moved.
And I used a second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned.